Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of 25 April. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I want to, item three, announcements and committee reports. I've got a couple of quick announcements. First, COVID. Again, the case rates continue to go down. Island Hospital has one patient with COVID. Anacortes Senior Center is offering Vaccination Clinic on Friday, May 6th, from 9:30 a.m. till 2:30 p.m. No appointment is needed. My other announcement is tomorrow is the 26th is the 100th anniversary of the Anacortes to Sydney Ferry Run. Unfortunately, as we know, the spring schedule is not doing that run, and we're still waiting to hear back from Washington State Ferry if there's a chance of at least getting the end of that, the end of the season run. So, we'll, still more to come on that one. Last announcement is Saturday, April 30th is National Prescription Drug Takeback Day from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., and we will have the Anacortes Police Department, 1218 24th Street, will be open, and there'll be reps there taking those prescription pills that aren't used anymore and can be correctly disposed of. Skagit County Public Health will also be at the concrete location, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., and that's at the Concrete Community Center, and they will also have free COVID vaccinations, well as free at-home testing kits, and free Noxalone kits will also be available at that location. And I think that is it from me, and over to council for other committee reports, the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee met last Thursday. We interviewed Jennifer Johnson, Director of Skagit County Public Health, and she talked about how the other cities in Skagit County have all adopted the Affordable Housing Sales Tax that we adopted. They adopted it councilmanically. We adopted it by vote of the people, which was the only way to do it at the time that we led the way on that. The cities now have clearly told the county that they would like to see a shared governance model for how that money is spent, how the other related funds are spent, and the county has indicated that they agree. They're talking about having a shared governance model for distribution of this money, which amounts to something like $15 million a year. So now they're working on that process. They're also working, along with the governance process, laying out a North Star vision of where it is we want to go with this money and with these types of human services. They have a consultant, they have a plan to develop a plan. They are currently in the first round of interviews of elected officials, police and fire chiefs, healthcare providers. When they complete that first, that very initial round, they are going to develop an executive summary slash call to action, which will actually kick off this effort, and then they will broaden that, that set of interviews to do other people as well. They've identified two biggest issues, which may sound familiar, homelessness and behavioral health. We told them we had come to the same independent conclusion about the top two issues, plus one process issue, and that is communication. We need to communicate among ourselves better, we need to communicate with the community better, we need to communicate between government agencies, but also between nonprofit agencies that are working in this space. And we said that they also need to communicate with city councils, because city councils are the contract authority. We would like to see them have a webpage about this process, minutes on the webpage, information about the plan, drafts online, tracking compliance and implementation of the plan when we get to that stage, and tracking and compliance of the homeless housing plan that we already have that has been criticized for not actually being implemented according to the plan. And we said we need to not forget about people who are not yet homeless, or not yet in a mental health crisis, because those people are important too, and solving their problems before they become a crisis is a lot more cost-effective. And we said we need geographic distribution of these resources across the county. It's not enough, and we use the example of the designated crisis responders for mental health, it's not enough to just have enough to fulfill the man-hours needed. It also needs to be geographically available to us, so if we call because somebody's in a mental health crisis, they can be there immediately, not an hour later. And we also noted that we've heard dissatisfaction from the county with the fact that Anacortes took its own path on the Affordable Housing Sales Tax money, and we said we will defend that, because we are getting housing built today as a result of that, and it's been very effective, and it was supported by the vote of our residents. Jennifer Johnson, the health director, will make herself available to present to city council, and we said we would love to have that happen, so that all of us are informed about what it is the county's working on here.
All right, thank you. Next up is Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met just before this meeting at 5 o'clock. It was Mr. Walters, Ms. Cleland McGrath, Mr. Meesmer, our planning director, and I that were attending. We talked about the critical areas ordinance, which we're nearing the finish line on. There are a couple of revisions that are being made that are, will improve it even further. There will be revisions to the wetland buffer averaging section to make sure that it is not less than 75% of, that's required by ecology, which means it's going to be substantial. The buffers are going to be substantial, so that's good news. And also, the stream buffers are being redone, and our 15 listed streams in Anacortes will be researched, reviewed, mapped, there will be site visits, and they will be ranked of their functions and values, which means their habitat values and their water quarter, water quality values will be assessed, and that will all be shared with the community. And with that inventory and mapping and data, that will give us really clear ideas of what needs to happen or not happen in those buffers. So those are very, very positive developments, so we're happy to be working on those. There is a recent sea level rise report that's been commissioned by the city that's part of our Flood Plane Management Code update, and Jim Johansson of Coastal Geologic Services has been working on that, and he's very highly regarded in his field and has done work for the city in the past. He will bring a report to council as part of that Flood Plane Management Code update. It dovetails with our comprehensive plan, and we'll use that information in our comp plan update of 2025. It's coming. And although FEMA recommends one foot above base flood elevation for the requirement of development, where the recommendation for Anacortes is for it to be two feet above, FEMA is a little behind right now on their, on their recommendations in this area. So, we're gonna, we're gonna do a little bit better than they recommend. We also had a great, I did a council with a, coffee with a council person event last week at the senior center, and it was great, and so I had a good turnout with some great questions and conversation. One of the suggestions from one of our citizens was, "How about if we have a map of the development that's happening in Anacortes? So when I look by the bus barn and I see the land's been cleared, how do I find out what's happening there? Like, how great would it be to just be able to click on a map and get a link to the development, you know, documents and stuff?" So, I emailed Don Meesmer and Rob Hoxsey, who's our GIS person extraordinaire, and they immediately said, "Yeah, let's work on that. That could be a really good resource for everyone." So, there will be more, more to come on that, but it'll go all the way down to garages and ADUs, so you can just click and say, "Ah, that's what's happening." So it's gonna be super nifty. There is a project on 5th Street that we've been talking about over the last couple of months, and that's, that project is gonna have a neighborhood meeting, and that will also be, that's gonna be on the planning, the planning department website as well. And lastly, we talked about Parklids, and if, what kind of regulatory measures we would like to have with those moving forward, to make sure that they're being best used, best utilized, and that they are serving all of our community and our downtown business community, and can, contributing to the vibrancy and the economy of our town. So, the planning committee will be working on that. We have some, some questions and some things we'll be addressing, and we will bring that information forward to share with you also, and thanks for listening to my long report.
Thank you for the detailed report. Any other announcements or committee reports may have missed? Okay, we're moving on to item four, public comment. This is the time on the agenda where we are open for members of the public that want to address city council. If you're not here to address any item that is already on the agenda, you can come and comment and talk to the council. And I'm looking online to our eight attendees, and looking to raise your hand if you're here to address the council on something that is not on the agenda. Okay, nothing, nothing seen or heard. Moving on to consent agenda, item five, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
I move to approve items A through D on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Mr. McDougall and a second. At the same time, I'll go Mr. Young to approve consent agenda items A through D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item six, public hearings. First up is CDBG 2022 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Meesmer is up for this one. And this is a discussion item and open for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience. The consolidated plan in your packet is the planning and application requirements for the city's Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program administered by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The consolidated plan is a one-year action plan, and it includes various projects, and it helps the city meet the community development needs, particularly of low-income residents. The draft action plan for the 2022 year attached to your review and is also available online. The tip, the city typically receives approximately $115,000 from HUD to administer for various projects within the city. The funding allocations are no more than 15% of total annual allocation for public services, and then the Section 108 loan repayment is being proposed for this year, and that Section 108 loan was one that was granted to the Anacortes Family Center for their new building project. So, in 2021, the council approved the 108 loan utilizing the CDBG funding for the family center, the landing. The original requested loan amount was $153,000. The city was able to use some excess CDBG funds from previous projects to assist in that, and therefore the loan amount has been reduced to $85,000, and that entire amount will be paid through the 2022 allocation. With that, staff recommends leaving the meeting open until Monday, May 9th, and of course taking any public comment there may be this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, this is open for a public comment, and we'll bring it back for final action on the 9th of May. Counsel, any, any members of the public? And counsel, any comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 6B, this is Resolution 3078, City Council Ward Redistricting Plan, and Mr. Hoagland, I believe, wanted to remote in on this one, because this is the, hope, could be our final action.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and members of the audience. To share my screen really quickly here. This is the public hearing that was continued or started on April 11th. We introduced this material early on before that meeting, but the comment period was open at that time, and since then we have received no comments on the districting, the redistricting plan, which as council is aware, just retains the current ward boundaries. So, we did have a request for an edit to the last resolution, which clarified that this districting plan is just continuing to use the existing ward boundaries. Also included with the resolution is a series of ward maps. It's five pages, including an overview, and then individually each of the three different wards. Yeah, sorry, I can't close my screen now. The joys of, of remote. So, once the mayor closes the public hearing, the resolution will be there for your consideration and happy to answer questions or observations that council may have.
Okay, and since I haven't closed the public hearing, I'll, one last opportunity for members of the public to comment on the fact that we're not changing anything with, with our wards. And I'm looking online in here, City Hall. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any discussion or possible action. Ms. Moulton.
This seems like a really easy one, so I move to adopt Resolution 3078, adopting the city's redistricting plan, which is the same as its existing plan.
Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Carter, adopting Resolution 3078, City Council Ward Redistricting Plan. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Hoagland. All right, moving on to item seven, it's a closed-record decision hearing, and the closed-record decision hearing is for a conditional use permit for Samish Early Learning Center. This is a discussion with possible action, and I believe Ms. Morgan, you are up for this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you close my screen?
We see ya and hear ya.
Perfect. Okay, so this evening, this is a closed-record decision hearing as stated for the Samish Indian Nation Early Learning Center. So the request is that the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit, which includes site plan review for the construction of a new early learning center for the Samish Indian Nation. The project proposes the construction of a roughly 4,100 square foot facility with roughly 400 square feet of covered play area on the southern lot, with a new 19-stall staff parking lot located adjacent to the new facility north of the alley. This is a two-parcel development. So a little background and history on this project. Demolition permits were issued for the nursery building, as well as the residence that is located on site. On November 30th of last year, we held our formal pre-application meeting with the neighborhood meeting taking place on January 20th. On February 1st of this year, we received a formal conditional use permit and site plan review application, and that was deemed complete on the 9th of February. On the 23rd of February, we issued our notice of application and public hearing, which included both public, excuse me, the public hearing for planning commission as well as city council. And the comment period ended on March 16th, with the planning commission meeting and the public hearing on April 13th. So, on the left side here is the facility campus, the highlighted area, the development to take place. So we do have that covered play area with the new facility, an addition of 19 parking stalls, which will be a great addition, and that does not include the on-street parking that will be proposed with the upgrades and frontage improvements. I believe total new parking for public will be roughly 32 spaces. And here's just kind of a quick little look at what the new building will look like, as well as the proposed landscaping. So, as stated, this is a conditional use permit, which is required in the residential low-density 2A zoning, and because this facility will have, have the ability to care for more than 12 students, it is considered a daycare 2, which again requires the CUP. And CUPs for daycare 2s are required to meet the criteria of Code 1936-040, as well as AMC 1944-010B, and that includes the site plan review as well. So kind of the key points on this one is again that the daycare 2s are permitted use in the R2A zone with a conditional use permit. Staff has reviewed the application materials thoroughly, and the new facility does meet the CUP and site plan review criteria. The required landscaping and frontage improvements would be completed prior to occupancy of the new building. The drop-off and pickup for the students would be through the alley, as well as the new parking lot, so the concept is that people will pull onto 15th into that new parking lot, and then exit through the alley onto D Avenue. With that, all staff would have off-street parking, so there shouldn't be, you know, a line of cars of staff along D or 16th or 15th. And on this project, no public comments were received. So one condition of approval that was a little different than normal, just because of a kind of discrepancy in the landscaping code, this type of project does require a landscape buffer for screening, as well as fencing. So it's a five-foot landscape buffer, as well as the six-foot fence. And because of the type of use, it does require a fence, so that was kind of a win-win with that. However, there is not any specificity within the code whether the buffer, landscape buffer has to be on the outside of the fence or on the inside. Kind of funky the way that it's written, it's a little open-ended, so it's a way to kind of remedy this and allow for some flexibility, because the concern with the current development is that west property line, that five-foot buffer abuts right up to private property, so the maintenance of that buffer may become a bit of an issue. So, as a remedy, I'll just go ahead and read this. "The type-C landscape buffer along the western property line shall be installed on the east side of the proposed perimeter fence," so that would be on the play area side, "unless the adjacent property owner allows that required buffer landscaping to be installed on their property," or some sort of easement to allow maintenance of that landscape buffer. But again, this is just to allow a little bit of flexibility for the applicant to work with the neighbors on how to move forward. So, at the planning commission meeting, the planning commissioners did recommend approval of CUP, subject to staff's recommended conditions of approval in the staff report that was dated April 4th of 2022. And with that, my staff recommendation, based upon the application materials, the finding of facts, conclusions of the staff report, I recommend approval, that the planning commission recommend approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions of approval. And thank you very much. I'll pass it back over to the council.
All right, thank you for the presentation, and this is a closed-record decision hearing. I believe there's only one party of record, and that's the applicant. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So, over for council for discussion. Mr. Young.
Thank you. Just wanted to make a, just a reminder of how needed this facility is in our area. We have just such a shortage of facilities for children and for families, and so I'm delighted to see this moving forward, as I am hopeful for others to be able to come forward, so I'm very much in support of this one.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I have just one comment on this application, or on the proposed conditions of approval, and that's the same comment that I had last week on the Fiddlehead Child Care Facility, and it's the same condition, simply that if complaints relating to drop-off traffic are, to a reasonable person, excessive, then we will require a traffic mitigation plan. I do think that that is setting us up for an unenforceable condition, because if that occurs, then the facility will already be operating. What will you do to mitigate? You're not going to change the facility, so your options are more limited. So I don't think in the future we should be using that condition, or that phrasing, or that approach on conditions for land use approvals. I'm not currently employed by Samish, but I was at the time that I was putting together this project, so I'll, I'll be abstaining from the vote on the decision here.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. It looks like a great project, and as we've said multiple times, we do have such a need for childcare in our community, and this will help fulfill some of that need. It looks like a very nice facility with good landscaping, and also I appreciate that the parking is for everyone, it's public parking as well, and with Smiley's Bottom in that area being so well utilized, that will be a benefit there, and I believe there's also going to be sidewalks with flashing beacons, or crosswalks with flashing beacons across D Avenue, so that will be some traffic calming as well, that I think will be welcome to people on both sides of D. So yes, I think this is an excellent project, and I would approve it.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland.
Yeah, seeing kind of, seeing the plan for the actual facility, and the number of kids that will be, will benefit, not only children, but families who need to work and live in our community, I am happy to move to approve the conditional use permit 200, 2022-002, a conditional use permit with site plan review for the Samish Early Learning Center, subject to the conditions of approval with, within the staff report of record. And, following up with a little note, I want to say thank you so much to Emily Morgan for her wonderful work for our community and your fantastic packets and presentations so far, because I believe this might be your last presentation to us.
It is indeed.
We're, we're disappointed to lose you, but know you're off to better things, so thank you so much for another, your final packet being such a good project, and, and we appreciate it as a council.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Mr. Young, to approve the conditional use permit 2022-002, Samish Early Learning Center. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters.
Abstain.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Emily, and thank you for your service to Anacortes, and good, best, best wishes in your next endeavor. Okay, moving on to item eight, other business. First up is Skagit 911 Interlocal Agreement. This is a discussion item, open for public comment, and Chief Kennedy is going to introduce.
Mr. Mayor, council, honored guests, thank you. You have before you tonight a proposed change for the interlocal agreement between the Skagit 911 Communications Center and all agencies within Skagit County that receive dispatch services. Tonight, we have Helen Rasmussen, who is the Executive Director of the Skagit 911 Communications Center. She has a brief presentation and will be available for questions afterwards. You do have these materials in your packet, and I will also be available for questions
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thanks for allowing me to come in and talk to you.
Could you get a, move the mic a little bit closer to make sure?
Is that better?
Yeah, much better, thank you.
Okay, sorry. I appreciate you taking the time to go over this with me. My PowerPoint is pretty short. Um... My PowerPoint is pretty short, just to give you kind of an introduction on what we do and who we are and what we're looking for, so I will just get started. So, 911 is the first number you call in any emergency in Skagit County. We dispatch all calls in the county for all fire municipalities and districts, all EMS, all law enforcement, and any disaster agencies as well as several other agencies. Our dispatchers process an average of 230,000 calls per year. Skagit County covers about 1,700 miles, and the population is sitting at about 132,000 right now, which is a 26% population increase compared to 2002. We've been a really good steward of public funds. We operate under a balanced budget. We have very limited reserves for emergencies, but we've passed all of our independent audits by the state, and we actively apply for grants to make tax dollars stretch further. We have completed a draft capital improvement plan. We have also completed a critical assessment. We had Apco International, which is the kind of national dispatch agency, for lack of a better word, come in and give us a full review of Skagit 911. And I told them I want the good, the bad, and the ugly, and that's what they gave us. We're currently funded by a 1/10 of 1% sales tax that came in in 2003. There's a 911 tax on telephone bills and then user agency fees. Our current systems do not meet the needs of first responders. There are areas in the county that have no radio coverage, other areas that have extremely poor radio coverage. We are completely technology-driven, and all critical systems require upgrades to keep them safe. Many of you know that you buy a laptop and then a couple of years later, you have to buy a new one. So, we're talking about a lot of equipment. The picture in this is actually our radio tower on Lyman Mountain, and it looks like this most of the year. We need more space to add additional call takers and dispatchers to efficiently manage the growing workload and looking out towards what is happening in 911 coming in the future. The 2022-2032 Capital Improvement Plan, again, this is in a draft form. It represents our strategy to provide comprehensive and resilient public safety emergency communication system. The projects listed in this plan are necessary improvements but have no funding source. In the past, Skagit 911 would budget approximately $200,000 per year for capital improvement out of our budget. That $200,000 is currently being used to pay off a $1.4 million bank loan for critical public safety upgrades listed in the previous Capital Improvement Plan. So, there's quite a few project names. I think one really important project is a 911 backup facility and technology. We are a single point of failure for this entire county. If anything happens in our building, we're done. Our 911 calls could be transferred to another agency. For example, currently, we use Island County as a backup, but all of the radio infrastructure lives in our back room in a building that is beyond capacity. So, we've listed a bunch of projects in here. Many of them are in the east county. Some of them are in Anna Cortis. There's La Conner, there's Little Mountain, some sites upriver that would be funded in part by Seattle City Light, and all of this is to provide a public safety network for the entire county. Just continuing on a little bit like that, also included in our capital improvement plan are three major projects, a placeholder for the computer-aided dispatch software system, which is currently owned by the Sheriff's Office. That system does not meet the needs of the fire EMS side of the county, and we currently have a group looking at what CAD systems, what can we do with our CAD system to make it meet those needs? This was actually included in the plan because I didn't originally include it since we don't own the CAD system, and a couple of board members were a little upset. So, it's back in there. It's a placeholder. This may come down the pipe. We have a new 911 facility listed in that capital improvement plan. Our facility is overloaded. It was built for 27 dispatchers and three front office personnel. We are currently have 33 dispatchers. We have a technical services department. We have no space for offices. The shared conference room in the facility is, has been given over to our IT staff, so there's two people in there. I have funding for an HR person, yet I have nowhere to put one, literally no space. We also put in here a mobile and portable public safety-grade radio enterprise system, and that would have Skagit 911 managing the entire radio system. For example, currently, we own the fire radio infrastructure throughout the county, so that is owned and maintained by Skagit 911. We do not own the law enforcement radios. And then each agency owns their mobile and portable radios. The mobile are the car radios, portable are what they carry on their body. Our goal would be to provide a public safety-grade radio enterprise system where we would set aside funding to replace all of those radios as they come up for replacement. I can tell you right now that there's a couple of fire districts that are using 30-year-old radios, and they complain because their radios don't work very well, and funding for radios is incredibly expensive. We can talk about that a little bit more. The equipment reserve and replacement was created in 2016 for the 2017 budget. In 2014, the radio system, the radio console system within the 911 center crashed. It was already obsolete, and they had to strip down whatever was left in the operational reserve to fund the replacement of that as well as take out a loan. So, when we created that ERNR schedule, what I told the board was, again, in 2015 when our telephone system, the 911 telephone system was obsolete and crashing, and we didn't have any money to pay for it. I actually went to the legislature and asked for money, and thankfully, they gave us money because it was a failing system. So, since 2016, we've built five new radio sites. We've implemented the ProQA EMS protocol system. We've upgraded our 911 phone system, and we've replaced the radio console system, all because we set aside funds for this. With these addition to the 911's infrastructure, the annual ERNR contribution should be increased to $670,000. We can currently only fund that at $220,000. So, the equipment reserve and replacement, again, we had to deplete operational reserve funds. It has taken me since 2015 to bring our operational reserve up to almost where it is supposed to be by resolution, and it should be sitting at about $1.4 million. So, through really careful budgeting and excess sales tax, we've managed to refund that operational reserve almost to what it should be. Currently, the ERNR fund is only partially funded. When you look at this slide, by 2027, we'll be $75,000, or currently, we'll be $75,000 under what we need to make the replacements. In 2029, we're at $1.3 million below, so we'll go back to managing equipment replacement by crisis. So, currently, the 911 center is, does get a 1/10 of 1% public safety sales tax. This was voted by the public in 2002 and came into being in 2003. The legislature has now approved an additional 1/10 of 1% sales tax. They did that in late 2018. At this time, we would like to go out to the public and ask for that. I am not asking you folks to approve that at this point in time. We're looking for those cost-effective solutions to address public safety and trying to make it clear, you know, what's happening on that 911 side and what's coming down the road on this. The sales tax would be 10 cents on a $100 sale. We'd like to put it in the November 8th general election ballot, and our sales tax would still be lower than Snohomish County and comparable to Watcom County. We consider sales tax a fair way to fund 911 because anybody that comes into our county can utilize 911. So, what we're asking for tonight is an amendment to our interlocal agreement. The language, the only new language in this interlocal agreement is to add the ability to receive the additional 1/1% sales tax if it's approved by the voters. To me, this is kind of a housekeeping piece. Obviously, our Board of Directors has to approve this to go out to the voters, and then the voters can speak, you know, to what's important to them. So, while I consider this kind of a housekeeping piece, it's a very important piece of it. The public safety system depends on a reliable, modern 911 system. It has to replace equipment. We need to add capacity to the radio system. We need to increase space to add call takers and dispatchers and upgrade type technology to help prevent cybersecurity attacks. The projects would build capacity across the system, allow for more efficient management of 911 calls, and help the entire county be better prepared for emergencies. I threw in a couple of slides here, sorry, after you guys received this packet. So, we have the Anna Cortis infrastructure. I wanted to talk about that a little bit. Currently, the Public Safety Agency of Anna Cortis rely on Gwemas Island, AFD Station 2, Reservation Road, Mount Erie, and District 13, the Hope Island Station. Since 2014, we have funded and provided the following for the city's public safety-grade radio infrastructure. For all of those sites, we provide the shelters, the generators, the engineering, the labor, and the programming of mobile and portable radios. That saves the city about $60,000 a year in the site rent and power and connectivity because we pay all of those costs. In 2014, Skagit 911 funded about $250,000 of the Westside Radio Improvement Project, and in 2017, we funded the five-site mixed-mode simulcast radio system for Anna Cortis at about $100,000. Planning for infrastructure replacement, so this is something just to keep in mind. In 2026, the 53 Anna Cortis Fire Department mobile and portable radios will reach end of life and need to be replaced, so you're looking at about $425,000. In 2029, same with the Anna Cortis Police Mobile and Portable Radios at about $496. We kind of ballpark that. Mike has a, I say a ballpark, but Mike has a formula. And then the Anna Cortis PD radio infrastructure will reach end of life and will need to be replaced, and that's going to run about $92,000. So, the future of 911 is unfolding. What's it going to look like in Skagit County? And I'm open for any questions.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Rasmussen. This is open for public comment, so I'll start with any members of the public present wish to address the council or ask questions. All right. I'm looking online as well for hands to be raised of our seven attendees. Okay, council, over to you all. Mr. Walters.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you have a per-call fee that you bill jurisdictions?
No, we don't. We used to be funded that way. Jack, how do I make this go away? Sorry. Can you undo whatever I just did? Sorry, technology. I wanted to go to the funding model. There we go. So, our funding model is based off of the amount of calls per jurisdiction, so I'll just say Anna Cortis Police Department. What we do is we create our budget. We look at the salaries, what is needed. We look at our funding from our protected, from our sales tax revenue. We take out part of that to fund the ERNR and the technical services as well as capital improvement. And then we determine the, hopefully that works. The way we determine the charges for each agency is we look at the amount of CAD calls or the amount of calls that we dispatched Anna Cortis to, the amount of funded officers. So, if you look at this law allocation for Anna Cortis Police Department in the top line of the left-hand side, you do 13% of the volume, so you pay 12.4% of the cost of the dispatchers and call takers, if that makes sense. The funding model is pretty complicated.
Okay. So, I think this wasn't in our packet, or at least I didn't.
No, this did not come in your packet.
But, so I understand that there's not a per-call charge, but the volume of calls does go into the formula?
Yes.
So, it does make a difference. Is there, I think we've had a number of conversations over the years about how everybody is told to call 911 for everything. Is that a problem? Is it, is it leading to more costs for Skagit 911? Do you get a large number of non-emergency calls?
We do take a lot of non-emergency calls. Yeah, absolutely. I want to say that we take about probably 80,000 non-emergency calls per year.
Do, would it be helpful if the jurisdictions published and promoted a non-emergency number so that you didn't take those calls? Or, or does that not really make a difference in the overall?
It probably doesn't really make a difference in the overall scheme of things because most of the non-emergent calls that we take are still calls for police and fire. Not as much for fire, but we commonly get emergency calls on the non-emergency number. So, yeah. We don't get calls for things like, you know, picking up trash, you know, or somebody needs to empty the trash bins at the Parks Department. So, generally, the calls that are coming in through 911 need to be dispatched to somebody, and if it's not what we would do or police or fire EMS, then we would refer them to where they need to call.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
So, looking at your, the, well, my first question is that 1/1% what that you currently collect, what's a dollar amount per year does that equate to?
It's about 3.4 million.
Okay. So, then, my, I guess my next question is, is that on the one, the slide for the Capital Improvement Plan, you've got projects that equal about 3.2 million, and then you have the radio sites that are about $4 million that are long-term projects, but you also mentioned the 911 facility, the computer-aided dispatch, and the mobile portable public safety. Do you get, do you have numbers of what those projects are going to cost for us because I didn't see any included in the presentation?
We do, and this has come out. If you actually look at the Capital Improvement Plan, which I believe, the draft Capital Improvement Plan, each page has costs on it. Some of those are, we have a couple of placeholders in there, but when you look at the cost of the enterprise system, it's actually listed in there in the Capital Improvement Plan. We also have a multitude of spreadsheets that we've put out, kind of to the board with different things. For example, this is what I call a very ugly spreadsheet. You guys can see that, yeah. Which actually includes all of the current equipment that we have, that we need to maintain and replace. So, we're happy to share this with the entire council, but basically what you're looking at is a 30-year plan that spans out all of the different pieces of equipment, and the red boxes mean this is the replacement year. So, in 2023, we need to replace the microwave radio system, the loop radios only, right? So, we're happy to share any documents that the council would like to see.
I guess my question is, I mean, this is the replacement, which is kind of ties in with those two, the 3 million and the 4 million, but to jump to the additional 1/1%, I'm just trying to understand like what, what that's going to cover? And maybe that's not a discussion you want to have now because you're just trying to get some of the approval. get some of the approval done, which I under, which makes sense. But I guess to me, that's kind of my next question when I've talked to Mayor Miller.
I think it's a great question.
Yeah.
So, and I'll try to make it brief. I know you guys still have more to do. I stand up here until midnight and talk about 911, so just tell me to be quiet. So really, when you look at the Capital Improvement Plan and you look at the ERNR schedule, it's like a puzzle, and all of the pieces sort of move. And what you're looking at is, if you want a roadmap that says, you know what, in 2026, this is what we're going to do, and in 2027, this is what we're going to do, and in 2028, this is what we're going to do, and all of this money is going to go into reserve funds that, we can fund these as we come along, I can't give you that because it is like a puzzle. So if you look at this and it says in 2024, for $71,000, we have to replace whatever it is, well, that may be true, right? But maybe something different is going to break, and we need to replace something that's going to cost half a million dollars, right? So projects get moved, which is why the Capital Improvement Plan spans a long term. And really, what we're looking at is, we are good stewards of public funds. I will never go back to the legislature and beg them for money for our 911 phone system. I mean, really, seriously. So to me, what we need is, we need funding. As the county grows, you need more infill projects. As different public works agencies put in different things, as the electrical grid grows, you need to put in different things, and we can't always anticipate what those are. The important thing is, to me, is that we're funding what we know is necessary, and we do that in a very careful way. I would say anything that we receive in terms of sales tax that we do not have earmarked to spend in a particular year goes into a reserve fund, or the board may want to create a couple of different types of reserves. Anything that we do in terms of projects, in terms of budget, in terms of capital outlay and ERNR, first go through the two technical committees. That's the Fire EMS Tech Group, the Law Tech Group. They make their recommendation to the Advisory Board. The Advisory Board looks it all over. They may say, no, you need to do some more work on this. We don't think it's right. We have an ad hoc financial planning board that looks at things before it even goes to the board, and any money that is spent on anything goes to the board for final approval. Otherwise, we can't do anything. There's a lot of safeguards built in, but really, what we have to do is plan for the future.
So I'll, I'll say those are really good questions because as the newest member of the 911 Board, I think that is the challenge for the 911 Board, to ask those type of questions. Is it the right funding path based on, on what, what are the needs and that? But this interlocal is, I think, just to, if, and maybe Chief Kennedy can correct me on that, or I'm sure Ms. Rasmussen, that the purpose of this interlocal is to authorize the Board to collect if the Board so chooses to vote to bring this to a ballot. So there's about three different steps still to go.
Correct.
There. But the, these are the right kind of questions to ask. And again, you know, I believe they're, you're good stewards of, of the funds, but it's, it's, do we, are these the right things for that period of time to go to the voters and ask for an increase is ultimately what the Board will be challenged. Ms. Walters.
Thank you for the presentation again, but also thank you for the documents that you've placed on the Skagit 911 website because with, there are quite a few of these actually interlocal organizations and boards and committees that are a little less transparent than you are being with this 911 ballot measure. And so the information on the website is useful. I'm not sure if these pieces are, but I would appreciate if we could put these into the packet as well. And I think it's important to have that information on the Skagit 911 website all the time, not just in advance of a ballot measure. The proposed edits to the interlocal, I think, are very straightforward. As has been mentioned, they, they just make it possible for the interlocal to function, to capture that additional one-tenth of 1%. Doesn't put it on the ballot, doesn't mean we approve of it. The agenda bill for this had about five words written on it, so I don't know if we're asking for action tonight to approve it or...
No, sorry, but Chief Kennedy, if you could give the follow-up on that?
What we just wanted for tonight was discussion with council and then directing the mayor when he attends the 911 Board as to how the City of Anacortes would like to proceed with the edits on the interlocal agreement.
Okay, so the edits, to me, look, look fine. I mean, it's one way of making those edits, but I don't have a problem with that. I would approve it if, if asked to.
And maybe Chief Kennedy, if you want to clarify, I didn't think we needed a vote for that?
I don't believe we need a vote for that. This would just be consensus for, for the mayor's direction.
Okay. All right, well, do I have a consensus, a head, with a show of a head now that I can, you know, go back to the 911 Board and potentially discuss the poss, if, if the Board does indeed approve it, then we will be able to collect those funds? I think that's the, that was the objective. And again, to keep this conversation going.
And if the Board of Directors does approve it, then it would come back to council for a full vote for signatory authorization.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification. All right, I think that's it, unless there are any other questions from council. All right, thank you very much.
Well, I'm happy to bring back more information anytime you'll need it. Thank you.
Okay, and my understanding, the next 911 Board meeting is the 11th of May. Okay. Okay, we are moving on to either business item 8B, which I think a lot of you are here to attend, and I'd like to, before I have Mr. Lunsford come up, I'd like to welcome back Mayor Lori Geir to City Hall. We're happy to have you back here, but I'm going to have, I'm going to have John do the introduction. Mr. Lunsford, you're on. And the subject is Community Youth Center Update. This is a discussion item and open for public comment. Mr. Lunsford.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, so tonight, we're going to be discussing the idea of a community youth center in Anacortes. Former Mayor Geir is here to lead that discussion, and I'll be here with her if you have follow-up questions that would involve the departments. And then I think there are very many people who would like to speak to you during this conversation. So with that, I'll hand it over to former Mayor Geir.
Thank you, Mr. Lunsford. Good evening, Mayor Miller and council members. It's wonderful to be back here in City Council chambers. This is the place where you all do the important work of setting vision and policy for our community. I thank you for all you've accomplished in recent years, addressing infrastructure, public safety, housing, supporting our economy, but I'm here to talk to you tonight about our future. Strong, healthy communities provide a foundation for our youth to grow, to be healthy mentally, emotionally, and socially. Our youth will lead this community in the future as parents, business leaders, teachers, healthcare providers, mariners, civic leaders, and so much more. Our youth are our future. So I'm standing here before you tonight, and I'm in really good company. I'd like to introduce you to some of the community members that have come with me tonight to talk to you about a proposed partnership for a youth center. So this evening, we have members of the Skagit County Boys and Girls Club, leadership, Ron McHenry, the director, Ian Finley, associate director, Pat Barrett, Board of Directors. We have James Tenderango, Boys and Girls Club, Matt Gil from Marathon. We have our Chief of Police, Dave Floyd. We have Mr. Gary Merlino, a property owner and willing to donate property to our project with his project manager, Jimmy Blaze. We have Jeff and Linda Hendricks, who would like to be major donors in this project. We have Rob Martin, who is the president of the Skagit County Boys and Girls Club. We have members from the pool are also attending tonight, the director and a board member. We appreciate you coming and listening in. We have Elise Cutter from the Island Hospital, and we also have the leadership from the school district, our superintendent and board members, and our school resource officer, Officer Dot Sauer. So we fill the chamber council, and when I left here in December, we hadn't had a group like this in a long time, so it's pretty exciting to have all these members here. So I'll get started about how we got here. I'm going to give you a little history and then what our proposed partnership is. And I might go back to a couple of people as I move forward with this. All right, so tonight, we're going to talk about an Anacortes Youth Center. This is a proposed partnership between the City of Anacortes, the Boys and Girls Club of Skagit County, and MJB, which is the Merlino Jones Brothers. So when did this process start? Well, in 2014, I was running for the office of mayor, and actually, in '13, it started. I went door to door. This was back in the pre-COVID days when you could go out in the community, you could knock on everyone's doors, and I heard about all kinds of things that were needed in the community. But there were two overarching things I heard about a lot. I heard, if you get elected, fix the internet. You guys have done great. We've got a municipal fiber, we're moving forward. And the other overarching theme I heard was our kids. At that point, there was a drug issue in, in the schools. There's just not enough for kids to do, and parents were very, very concerned. So when I came into office, we started a community youth task force, and we have met quarterly for the last almost nine years. And at that first meeting, the Anacortes Police Department was present, the Parks Department, Island Hospital, which is now Island Health, the Anacortes School District, Youth Dynamics, Compass Health, and the Boys and Girls Club. And so we've met quarterly for the last nine years. And it was all because we needed to address how to support our youth, how we all work together to take care of our children in this community and help them grow up socially, emotionally, well. And so that's where we went. So after our first year, several needs were identified, and in that first year, we even had a year-long meeting where we met with parents, and we met with school counselors, and we met with health providers from the hospital and, and students. And we met on and off for a year, and we identified needs in the community. And out of that came, we, a commitment from all these agencies, the city, the hospital, and the school district, and the, and the police department, to better coordinate our messaging and our programming. So from that time forward, anything that went out, that we, we produced in a brochure or, you know, A-Town and what the Island Hospital puts out, we made sure that we are coordinating activities for youth, we are giving tools to parents and family members, just resources in the community to help our kids, and also in summer programming, we coordinated. Out of that also came our school resource officer. We identified a need in the schools that if we had a school resource officer, and this was a partnership between the city and the school district, we brought in a school resource officer, and this now gave us an opportunity for, rather than a kid getting in trouble and going to court, now a kid is identified in the schools by his peers or a counselor, and the officer now could build relationships, build relationships with what's going on with Johnny and why he's having trouble having lunch with that person, helping parents navigate when a kid's in trouble, helping his kids just graduate and get through school. And so Officer Dot Sauer is here tonight, and this program has been a raging success, and we have a new officer starting in September. And I know ultimately, the goal for the school district and the city, I think, is eventually to have two resource officers, so that came out of this group. We also identified the need for a drug dog. We thought if we don't want drugs in our schools and we don't want them in our community, we have to have a tool, a way to identify where the drugs were. And so we have T-Bone, who, this is our second drug dog, and we, this, this came out of this same group, and it's been very successful. We've kept, we've found drugs in our community, and we've found drugs all over the county and been able to confiscate it because we, we funded a drug dog. So at the end of that year of meeting with parents and kids and social workers and teachers, the kids said, you know, it's really great, you're going to coordinate and do all this for us, but we need a place. We need a place to go where it's safe and it's structured, or I can just hang out and do my homework or have a meal, a place that provides social, emotional development, a place where I can shoot hoops or play outside. And that's the part we never got done. So why a youth center? Well, childcare is critical in our community, after-school especially. Our community needs another gym for our Parks Department activities. Community-wide, we don't have enough gym space. The school district has been an incredible resource. All of the parks and rec programming goes on in those school gyms, but the need for another regulation gym is imperative. The Anacortes Boys and Girls Club needs a better, safer, permanent home with an outdoor space. Downstairs, great, incredible programming, but I, the parking lot here is not a, not an outdoor space for kids. And especially in the wake of COVID, supporting our youth is critical for their social, emotional development. So in '14, we had drug and alcohol abuse and navigating all that. Coming out of COVID, we have a mental health crisis for not only our adults, we, our kids. And Island Health right now is addressing that, and they're doing an incredible job. So in '14, we have one issue, and '22, we have another issue, and I don't know what, what we're going to be facing in 10 years or 20 years, but we need to build to have a place to support our youth. So you want to know how many kids we have in town? Well, we have, as of 2020, we had 2,500 school-aged children, and we had 1,000 other children under the age of five, which I think some of those now are at school age. So 3,500 people in our community are under the age of 19. So this, it's a large part of our population. And this is the priority, and what the Boys and Girls Club does, it talks about what young people need the most, what their club can give them, and their outcomes, academic success, healthy lifestyle, and good character development and citizenship. The Boys and Girls Club also provides 10 sites throughout Skagit County. The Anacortes Club has been operating out of a business at City, out of City Hall here since 2012. They're about to open a new daycare at the Anacortes Family Center in the New Landings Apartment, and they also offer bus service from select schools during normal operation to our, to the facility here. They also offer free and reduced lunches during the summer. So what's the impact in Anacortes? The Boys and Girls Club right now, with what we have in the basement, are able to take care of 250 kids and teens annually. 52% of those kids come from single-parent households. 69% of those kids are on free and reduced lunch. 14% of those children are children of our military families, and 34% of those children come from very diverse backgrounds. So 250 versus, what did I just tell you? We have almost over 3,000 young people. So we're not able to serve, just with this one agency. Youth Dynamics does a lot of good work, several groups do, but this is, we're just, we're maybe 10% of who we can serve right now. And they also, right now, are able to provide 1,450 hours of after-school and full-time summer programming. So right now, that's the impact they're making in Anacortes. They're getting to about 10% of the kids that really need our help. So what we've done so far, I talked about the community task force, and we've been meeting quarterly since '14, and I talked about everyone in that group, the Police Department, Fire Department, Parks, Island Health, the School District, Youth Dynamics, Compass Health, and the Boys and Girls Club. In 2016, our first major donor stepped forward, Mr. Hendricks. He said, Lori, if you get the kids out of the basement and give them a place, I will be a major donor to that project. And he's, he and Linda are here this evening to support this. In 2017, we did a feasibility report, and we evaluated several sites in the community. Originally, that, we evaluate, we identified the site by Island View School, up by the pool, we thought, you know, next to Island View, the middle school, it made sense. We thought, you know, next to Island View, the middle school, it made sense. But for many reasons, that site didn't work out. 2017 to 2019, we continued to work with the school and the pool district on siting. We all know what happened in 2020. And then in 2021, we had a breakthrough, an offer of vacant property by Mr. Merlino, who's with us this evening. And I'm going to tell you how we got to that breakthrough on the vacant property. MJB offers land adjacence to the skateboard park. And first of all, Mr. Merlino came forward, and he proposed a right-of-way vacation. And they want to vacate property at the 22nd Street bathrooms, which run by 22nd Street, the roundabout, and the Tommy Thompson Trail. They'd like to vacate that property next to their big building site. And in replacement for that, they would replace the restrooms closer to our skateboard park. So that's how the conversation started. MJB would fund the new bathrooms near the skateboard park. And then Gary said, well, what if we donated some additional property? You know, you've got the skateboard park, you need a place for kids. What if we did that? So here is the proposed site. And there you can see the city bathrooms, just to the north of the 22nd Street roundabout, and that's where they talked about they'd like to vacate and replace the bathrooms. Then we have the Tommy Thompson Trail. You can see how it's aligned along this property. Then you have the existing skateboard park, and we know the incredible energy right now and redevelopment that's going on there, and we've had incredible donors in the community. And then we have the city-owned property. You can see that triangle. We own all that property. The city owns that, and that's where the skateboard park is today. And then Mr. Merlino said, well, what about if we donate property directly south of that? And what would that look like? And how would that work? And would that help the kids? So the proposed site is south of the skateboard park. It's owned by MJB. It's zoned industrial, but a conditional use permit is required but allowed there. Thank you, Mr. Reesmer. We did our development regs, we thought ahead there. And it's adjacent to the R4 zone, and that's where we have our high-density residential area right now. A lot of families live there, a lot of kids live there, and this is really close. This is their neighborhood. And we see in the future that this high-density residential area is going to get redeveloped, and we're going to have more density there, and more families and more kids. So we think it's an incredible place, right near this property, to look at a youth center. So this, I must say, this is conceptual only. It's just to give you an idea how it would look and how it would orient if we were able to put a facility on that piece of property. As you can see, we have our avenue to the west. We have Tommy Thompson Trail to the east. It has parking that would be to the south of the skateboard park. And, you know, in my mind, I'm going, well, somehow, we need to work out the parking lot could be shared by both, between the skateboard and the facility. And that was something Mr. Merlino pointed out and thought was very important, that if this is something that we move forward with, we make this look like an integrated campus. So one flows into the other. And we've got parking for both facilities, we've got access to the Tommy Thompson Trail, we've got restrooms for the skateboard park, we have an outdoor area where somebody could go after school and just kick a soccer ball if they wanted, or go inside and be part of one of the Park and Rec programs or Boys and Girls programs. We'd have administration and storage space for Park and Recreation Department. We'd have space for the Boys and Girls Club. And remember, they're a qualified state childcare, and they're licensed to do this, which is really important, to have someone that's licensed as part of this overall project. And we would have another, at least one other, regulation-sized gym for our community. And we have outdoor recreation space, additional to the skateboard park. And we'd have potential lease space for other youth-serving organizations in the future. Like I say, we know what the needs were in 2014, we know what we're dealing with today. We need to be looking out 20 years. What are the needs of our kids going to be in 20 years? And build a facility that's good for at least 50 years. So we had this break, literally, for eight years, we've been treading water, and I feel like in the last three or four months, we've had a breakthrough proposal between Mr. Merlino's generosity, Mr. Hendricks staying at the table, and then the Boys and Girls Club stepping up, and I'll share that with you now. MJB is ready to transfer acres to the city at no cost? The Boys and Girls Club, this is what just happened in the last three weeks. The Boys and Girls Club and their directors stepped up and said, we will lead a capital fundraising campaign to fund 100% of design and construction. And that was the other missing piece. Well, there were several, but that was really a big component. And the third piece, and this is what we're asking you to consider and think about as we move along in these discussions, is long-term, we're asking the city to own, operate, and maintain the facility. So here's a timeline that the Boys and Girls Club has laid out, to give you an idea of what it would look like once we get through this process, that if the city leaned in and said, you're willing to take on responsibility for maintenance and operation long-term, the Boys and Girls Club, at that point, would take on the fundraising feasibility study during the next two quarters of this year. During that same time, we'd work on developing an MOU, the second, third, and fourth quarter of this year. At the end of this year, we would work on finalizing the project's scope. In the second quarter of '23, we would work on state grant requests for architecture and other elements. Then, in the second quarter of '23, they would start the fundraising campaign. I said, we would start it, but all of us. But the Boys and Girls Club, F, the lead of all of this. Middle of the third quarter of '23 would start architecture and design. Fourth quarter of next year, that's where the conditional use permitting would start. Into '24, where we'd be looking at more state and grants coming through, with construction starting late '24, early '25. This whole timeline is based on the grant cycles. And of course, if we got a whole lot of other donors up front, and we didn't have to wait for some of the grants, it's possible we could shorten this timeline. But we feel like this is a pretty aggressive timeline, and it allows us to apply for every grant that's available and work within a process that makes sense for success, with construction in '25. So what's next? How do we make this project a reality? What's needed from the city council? One is coordination with the skateboard park design to maximize potential of the youth center site. Two, a commitment to accept, operate, and maintain the new facility upon completion. And three, a commitment to a long-term lease of a portion of the new facility to the Boys and Girls Club of Skagit County. At this time, I will take any questions, myself or anyone in the audience. And thank you for listening tonight and being here, and we just appreciate your work.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And yes, this is the time for questions, comments. I'll look online first to see if I got any hands raised. And I know we have lots of supporters here, also, if you wish to add anything to that. Great presentation. You're welcome to come up. All right, well, I will turn it over to council for comments. I think we see the asks here, and council comments.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Yes, no, I just really wanted to be as brief as possible, but an extraordinary presentation it really was. I am so hopeful, and just the community stepping up, so much work that's been done, Mayor Gear, the teams, it is impressive. And I think that it's very much needed for our community. I think the asks are within reason and truly worth considering by the council. And I'm just really working to absorb everything that I've seen tonight, and I'm looking forward to further discussions. But really, I just wanted to applaud the effort at staying consistently persistent and bringing it forward. So now we have what we do, and I want to thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
I just want to say, I'm very excited about this. First of all, I like it when a plan comes together. But second, I think breakthrough is a great word, because we've been hearing churn about this project for so many years, mostly about the location and trying to figure out the location and trying to shoehorn it in. And I know that there's been a lot of debate about that, and I think that there are several good, possible locations. And this one wasn't really ranked very well in that old report. But I think that's because it didn't really look towards the future. I think this site does work, and it actually is an example of good planning, for the reasons that former Mayor Gear pointed out there. And regardless, it's possible, and it's far, far better than the basement of City Hall, which is really far away from meeting current building codes. And I do not feel good about having the Boys and Girls Clubs down there. I'm especially excited, though, about the integrated campus, with the trail, the skateboard park, new bathrooms. I mean, the skateboard park today, the kind of sad art that's north of it, it's not a well-developed site at the moment, but it could be. And if you look at Kirkland, Kirkland has Peter Kirk Park, Kirk is Kirk in Kirkland. It has a skateboard park, it has a teen union building, it has a performing arts building, it has a library, all on one site. That's a great example. I think that this is smaller scale, similar to that, and it could emulate that. I think it makes perfect sense to put Parks staff there to oversee this facility, keep eyes on it, manage the building. I think it makes perfect sense to move the bathrooms from their current location. The right-of-way layout over there doesn't make sense, so that's reason enough. But the bathroom location, without having eyes on it all the time, is not optimal. Ms. Moulton, Ms. Hubig, and I attended the skateboard park design review meeting last week, and all the kids there were excited about the skateboard park. We didn't talk about this proposal, but one of the questions that the kids had was, where are the bathrooms going to be? And the answer was, well, you know, we got these bathrooms up here. They were not very excited about that. I think they would really be excited about bathrooms that are closer to their new park. And so when we talk about laying out the new skateboard park, I think we ought to move it as far north as we can without compromising the skateboard park, because from having done some of these projects, there is a chance of running out of space. And we don't know how much money the community can raise yet, so we don't know what the scope of the project is going to be. I think it makes sense to harmonize those. Don't plan a project that's larger than what we can fundraise. But also, let's not run out of room, because we thought we had all this space for the skateboard park. Let's orient those and integrate them. When we talk about moving the bathrooms, I don't think it's important to do a one-for-one trade. I think what's important is that we get money and build new bathrooms and get them located next to the skateboard park. Money is fungible, that's the great thing about it. So we just need money, and then we can sequence it however it needs to be done. I think, I would like us to give to this group, to Mayor Gear, and to others, the takeaway that the city council is really enthused about this project, because I definitely am.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gear, for your wonderful presentation and all your work on this for so long. And to see it begin to bear fruit is fantastic and tremendously exciting. And thank you to the extraordinary generosity of our community members, Mr. Merlino, Mr. and Mrs. Hendricks. This is, I mean, what you're doing for our community is, I can't thank you enough, and everyone else who supports these projects in tandem. To have this area of town, just picturing it coming to life with these resources all together for our families and our children, and just bringing more vibrancy to that whole area with the trail and the neighborhood, it's just so inspiring, and I'm thrilled. Thanks.
Ms. Cleland.
Yeah, well, first of all, Mayor Gear, thank you for your presentation and kind of the history, framing the history and background of how we got here. I think that's really nice for the public to hear, and it's always nice to be reminded of how we got here. I think that we've had a lot of discussions about location, and while I think they were all in good faith, for whatever reason, it took till now to kind of see the spark of this makes sense for the city with the skate park. Now, I remember when the Ben Ruth Skate Park was first built, and we, and my family, call it the teeter-totter sculpture, because my child thinks that it's a teeter-totter. We haven't actually tried yet. But it's, you know, it's something that's really important. So I would like to wholeheartedly say, yes, absolutely, the city should commit to maintaining and being in ownership of it. But I also want to say thank you so much to the Hendricks family, MJB, but also to the Boys and Girls Club for being willing to be that extra component of fundraising, because I think that that was something we were also waiting for, or hoping to kind of figure out how we're going to do that, because everything costs money, and it keeps costing more money. But this is really, really exciting. It's in a location that makes sense for our high-density development. And that whole area between our avenue and commercial needs some kind of draw, right? It's also where we see a lot of our housing authority properties. And so to have this as an anchor, a place to go, is really, really important for the quality of those folks who are living in all of that area in the future. So thank you so much for coming, and thank you for all the folks being here today. But I am in agreement that this is a really incredible opportunity.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougall.
I'm in basically total agreement with what's already been said, and thank you so much, Mayor Gear, and also just the sheer number of organizations and donors that have come together to get us to this point. So thank you very much for your coordination. In total support, and I'm already kind of brainstorming of, like, you know, different options for operational, or, you know, helping to fund operations from, like, you know, sports tournaments and things like that. So very excited about this.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. This has been absolutely fantastic. It's great to see such support in this community. Love it, love it, love it, support it myself. I kind of have a nitpicky sort of question. So the line for the state LCP grant request, if that's the local community funding that happens during session, if I could make the recommendation of filling in the little blue squares in Q4 of '22 and Q1 of '23? Q1 is, of course, when sessions, yeah, yeah, yeah. And also, whoa, that's going to happen really soon. So look forward to seeing you in Olympia, and, yeah. Q1 of '23 is the best time to do it, it's the start of the B I A M. So I just wanted to put that bug in your ear.
I think they got it. Mr. Carter? Okay, that's a thumb. All right. Mr. Young, we already heard from, and thank you, Mayor Gear. That was fantastic. I think you heard from council, a pretty strong commitment moving forward.
I think that gives the Boys and Girls Club some assurance they can get to work.
We are in. And I wrote, you know, it's like, location, breakthrough, generosity, all coming together. So I really appreciate the finally moving forward here, so thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We are moving on to item 8C, which is Grandview Cemetery Fee Update. Mr. Lunsford, I'm sure you're going to one-up the previous presentation on this. Good luck with that. Grandview Cemetery Fee Update.
I'm just excited everyone's staying for my presentation.
Yeah. Well...
Oh, they're not.
While he's putting his slides up, this could be a good time to, all right.
It'll take me a few minutes if you really don't want to watch my presentation.
Everybody wants to watch this. Go ahead, Mr. Lunsford.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. So we wanted to have a discussion with you about the future of the fees at Grandview Cemetery. And so we thought it would be an opportune time to do that as we are getting ready to start selling new plots in the expansion area. So it's an opportune time to discuss it, and this is just what it is, a discussion. We aren't asking you to make a decision. We're just here to let you ask questions and go from there. So here we go. So as you can see, just for those who aren't familiar with it, Grandview Cemetery has been expanded to the west by 4.5 acres. That's an increase of one-third to the existing cemetery. That's what it looked like on the left, and then it's, all the trees were gone. And now it's starting to look like this. We've had a very difficult winter-spring, or winter-winter, really, to help things grow, but we're getting there. So this is what we want to do, keep things growing and be able to sell plots in the new cemetery section in June to the public. So to do that, we wanted to ask you a few questions and get your ideas and responses. So right now, as you can see, compared to other cemeteries, that if you want a full burial lot, that's, our cemetery, it's $814. That includes endowed care, that means care for the grave in perpetuity. And an earned lot, which is much smaller, just for cremated remains, is $616. At other publicly-owned cemeteries nearby us, you can see the price variation is significant. We're kind of at the low end, except for some of Seidrawali's costs. And the third column is columbariums. A columbarium is like an above-ground crypt for cremated remains. They kind of look like this. So we don't have any of those right now, outdoor structures like this, but we were going to add them, and we don't have a price structure for that. So back to this. So we would like to talk to you about how we might increase our prices and why. So the why to that impartial is to kind of bring us in congruence with some of the other costs that neighbors of ours that are publicly owned charge their customers. And so if we were to keep going on that, oops, I don't want to do that. There we go. So fees for your consideration, if we just did the average of the prices on that previous sheet, you'd see that a lot price for a full burial would be $1,300. That's a significant increase. Earn lots were right around the average. It's about $620 for the average. Columbarium prices, you can see, they swing from about $1,095 to $1,500. And the reason for that is that, like real estate, those on the bottom sell for less, those on the top sell for more. So we want you to look at these prices and think about what that would mean for Anna Cordis. For us, think about these costs. So we just expanded the cemetery. It costs about $860,000 to do that. If we sold on average about 40 lots, which we have over the past couple of years, 40 to 50 lots, at the current price that we have, which is $814, we'd raise about $1.5 million over the life of the cemetery. If we increased it to $1,300, we'd raise about $2.5 million. So the costs aren't getting any smaller. Talking to our finance department, looking at the unified fee schedule, they expect our costs to go up at Grandview about 9.9% a year, just in labor. And we'll be adding more irrigation, more labor time to take care of that additional 4.5 acres. So those are some of the costs that we're incurring, and that will be an additional charge to the hit on our property taxes. If we can raise more money through the fees, then we can offset some of those costs is our hope and our goal. So again, I just wanted to bring these up for your consideration. I'm not asking you to do anything, but give me questions, give me issues, give me concerns that you have. We deliberate. We also want the public to know we're considering this because they can go now, if they want to buy a plot in the existing cemetery, they can go do that right now, and these are the prices. They're not changing. So we want the public to know that through this vehicle of council meetings. They can go buy lots in the existing cemetery, which we have about 120 full burial. They're mixed and matched around the cemetery, so if your family wanted to go buy a lot of plots, that's difficult to do. If you want to buy a couple here and there, you can do that, but we're running out of selection. And so if you want to go buy them now, you can. And as you and I and the public are deliberating these costs, then that will change, we expect, if you're ready to do that, when we're ready to sell in early summer. So I just want the public to know that. This consideration is going on, but they can still buy plots today. And there you go. Those are my comments. Those are some of the issues we're facing. And if you have questions, I have a yellow pad and a pen.
All right. Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
Yes, thank you. I guess, you know, great presentation, John, as always, and I really appreciate the details and the focus that you've been working on, trying to balance out not only the costs associated with it, but the service we do for community. Sometimes those two things are out of balance. And so I guess the question I would have for you and also for council, can we get to a given projections and almost break-even point? Or are we looking to generate a bit of revenue to cover all those costs that may be coming in the future we've not anticipated? Or are we doing a service and we don't expect to break even on our costs associated with not only maintaining it, but expansion? Those are three sort of scenarios that we really happen to choose because it really is a family and community cemetery. But the question as stewards of the public funds is, can we balance them out? And at what price does that cause each of those components to be priced at? Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Yes, go ahead.
So thank you, Mr. Young. That's a great question. So right now, for a budget that's about, let's just say it's about $250,000 a year, 200 or so, about 200, 190 is property tax funded. So fees pay for the rest, so that's how we look at that. We'd like to bring that a little tighter. And so to give that a little more funds for the fees themselves, like Washington Park, that's paid for by the user fees. To do that here would drive the cost extremely high, and I don't know that I want to propose that to you, but I do think a little more balance would be helpful for the future. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Yeah, and that's, of course, why we're bringing this up for discussion, to make sure we get all the input, not only from council, but members of the community. And if I have anybody here that wants to weigh in on this issue, I know we're not looking at asking for a fee change, but certainly one's coming. I think there's appropriate backing for raising the fees. It's just getting to the right balance of where we want to balance, like Mr. Young said, between the service that we provide and user fees and ongoing costs of the future. So I'll be quiet. Any other council members? Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lunsford, for these details. I really appreciate it, especially also including the 9.9% year-over-year increase in costs to operate the cemetery. I'm glad our earned lots are right in keeping with the average. It does seem like a big jump for the lot price, and I don't know how fancy our columbarium needs to be. I guess we'll talk about that, like how much that's going to cost. I mean, death is an expensive business, and it's just hard to see fees go up. I think it's 40% for the full lot, roughly. I'm glad we still have some lots available in the old section, which is also lovely. So anyway, just throwing out there that the new lot price and the columbarium prices that are suggested make me sort of, give me a little twinge of discomfort. But anyway, I guess more conversation will follow on this. So thanks.
Ms. Cleland.
Yeah, I was just curious, when you're looking at the lot price versus the earned lot versus the columbarium, are there trends moving forward of what people are tending to choose in the next 30 to 50 years?
They are, yes. So in talking to Evans Funeral Home in Town, so they're seeing about 10% of their business, not necessarily 10% of ours at Grandview, is full burial. Most folks are going the route of cremation. We also could look at things such as green burial. You know, that's where a person is just buried in a shroud or a compostable container. We'd have to write things with you into our laws, our municipal code, that that could never be exhumed. You know, that was just, that is the forever resting place because now you can exhume the bodies. We have methods to do that. We would not have the method to do that. So those are things we'd have to discuss in, you know, the rather acknowledging our mortality and what we are, biological humans, that things change when we die. And so how to manage that is up to each family. So then most folks are cremated remains. Some are, you know, in the design that we have, Ms. Cleland McGrath, we're leaving about, of the 1,959 full lots we have planned, we also have a section of the cemetery we're not planning to do anything with right now because we know that future councils, future governments are going to want to maybe do things a little differently. And so that could change. That's going to be at the northern end, just going to be grass for a long, long time. So trends now are cremated remains. Columbariums are quite popular, and we don't offer that. People are, you know, in some cemeteries, if you look around, that's kind of a thing that's been happening, more kind of this outside crypt. The mausoleum that we have is full. We could build another, and we have space to do that. But that's not a real popular trend, is full burial inside a crypt like that that we're seeing.
So looking at the columbarium, I mean, financing that, is that paid for ahead of time by the city and then as folks decide to purchase those spaces?
You could do it a number of ways, but traditionally, I think what is done is a cemetery purchases that and then sells the pieces over time. So you could either purchase them in kind of a, so the ones on the left and the other one are kind of like more factory-made, the one at the bottom's a little more custom-made. I mean, you could work with a local stonemason to create one, or you could buy them kind of, I don't want to say off the shelf, but that are manufactured that way and bring them in, create it already, and sell them. They're between, depending on the size and style, you know, 15,000 to 20,000 for a similar thing that you're seeing on the screen, just for us to purchase it, and that doesn't cost, you know, we have to prepare the area for that. And then that's why they sell for so much, because you want to maybe triple your value on that, because that is yours forever as a municipality to take care of.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious about density, right? Just like we deal with housing density, is there things we should think about?
We have room for about six of the ones on the left that you saw, six to eight.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I appreciate the presentation. I agree conceptually that we should raise our fees to be not too far behind the median so that we're not billing the living quite as much on an ongoing basis. You got a little metaphysical there earlier, Mr. Lunsford. I appreciated that. I think, though, that when you come back, maybe with a resolution to amend the unified fee schedule to add these fees, I would appreciate seeing some private cemetery numbers as well. I don't think that we should be setting our fees based on the private fees, but I think it would be informative. Also, we do have another public cemetery just down the street from this one, and I was wondering if we could get their fees.
So yes, you're thinking of Fern Hill?
Yeah.
Correct. So Fern Hill, their rates are much lower, but we're trying to fully understand the services that they provide for those fees. So as a cemetery, just like they charge their people differently. But I can try to give you more answers to that because we ourselves are curious more about that, so.
And an asterisk, you know, explaining that it's a different set of services, I think would be useful.
Correct, correct, yeah. Yes, I can provide that.
And then our costs go up with inflation, so I would expect that, like most of our other fees that are on the unified fee schedule, that these would also be subject to the annual CPI, or at least I would want to see that in a proposed resolution. Oh, and finally, yes, I think that we should offer green burial. I think that that's more attractive to people on an ongoing basis, and maybe that can be a project to amend the code and whatever means is necessary to make that possible.
All right. Any other questions or comments? We're all going to end up in some sort of similar circumstance, so we need to prepare. And, okay. All right, well, we're moving on to item D, Contract Modification, Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall and Design. This is a discussion item and possible action. I think Mr. McDaniel is going to present with his team.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Glad to be here. I'm not sure that I can quite outclass the cemetery rates, but we'll give her a shot. This evening, in front of you, we have a contract modification. This is for the sewer outfall project. The scope of services amends the engineering services during the construction for the marine portion of the outfall beyond what was included in the past agreement and amendments. The scope also includes ongoing assistance to the city during the evaluation of the contractor's proposal and possible award of the construction contract for the upland portion of the outfall. This evening, I brought Tim Homan with me to help answer questions if there are any.
Okay, thanks. So hopefully, council had a chance to review this contract. And any questions for Public Works team? No questions or comments? Mr. Walters.
Just one, I guess. This is an expected expense as part of the overall budget for the progress project.
Mayor Miller.
Counsel, Tim Homan, Engineering Services Manager for the Public Works Department. Yeah, this is a standard in projects of this size to hold back your design consultants, give them design, then once their design is complete, you move into the construction phase to bring them forward. So this is just, just brings the design consultants forward to the construction so that they can continue with their advice and help us through the construction process.
Any motions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I guess with no other questions, I move that City Council authorize the mayor to sign a modification of contract 20032 SEW 007 with HDR Engineering in the amount of $217,406, increasing the total contract price to $1.2 million, $8,929.18.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Carter, to approve the contract modification for the wastewater treatment plant outfall with HDR. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're on to our last item in number 8E, Resolution 3080, Establishing Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for 2022. Mr. Meesmer will kick it off.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience. Proposed Resolution 3080 would establish the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for 2022, consistent with Ordinance 4019 and according to municipal code 2.48.0201. A city council member who, per RCEW 67281817, must serve as Chair of the LTAC, three representatives of business required to collect the tax, and three persons involved in activities authorized to be funded by revenues received under RCEW Chapter 67.28. A total of nine talent bank applications, along with one which was received late last week, which included Jennifer Wilson, which I sent that out by email to the council members today, were received and reviewed by Mayor Miller, Chairperson, Councilmember Young, and myself. And after much discussion and negotiation, the following persons are recommended for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So representing lodging tax generating businesses, John Kim with Ship Harbor Inn, Mark Leon lodging tax generating businesses, John Kim with Ship Harbor Inn, Mark Leoni with Cap Sania Inn, Alia Rossi, Majestic Inn and Spa, and Alia is the general manager. And then representing organizations potentially funded by lodging tax revenues, Anastasia Brinck, Anacortes Pride, Kristi Lyman, Anacortes Chamber of Commerce, and Summer Carter, Anacortes Music Project. And I'd like to just bring up one thing. And so earlier at the planning committee meeting, we had a brief discussions about those folks who are eligible to be appointed. And I wanted to point out that I misspoke at one point. And so I'll read the actual RCW. The committee membership shall include at least two members who are representatives of businesses required to collect the tax under this chapter, and then B, at least two members who are persons involved in activities authorized to be funded by the revenue received under this chapter. And what it boils down to is persons who are eligible for appointment under A of this subject and are not eligible for appointment under B. So if they're paying the lodging tax, they're not eligible to be appointed to the committee as a recipient of the lodging tax. So I just wanted to point that out. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those. If you'd like to go through the applications for the Lodging Tax Committee, those are in your packet. Your pleasure.
Mayor Miller.
Mayor Miller. Well, let me let the Lodging Tax Chair go first, and then Ms., Mr. Young, and then Ms. Hubig.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Miller. One of the reasons, one of the reasons I wanted to just sort of speak first is that in this whole process, Mayor Miller, myself, Mr. Meesmer, we had a thorough discussion of what the responsibilities of the Lodging Tax Committee is and the vision forward look. And we really did look at all of the applicants and went through them many times. And the results of what we're bringing forward to council for your consideration are the names of some people that we believe would serve and serve well. And so I, I just really wanted to sort of put that out to you. I'm sure there is a vigorous discussion of issues, but at the end of the day, all of the people that we put forward, we believe that they will serve and serve the community well, and we believe that they are the best of the best. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. Mr. Meesmer, would the appointees from this slate then serve through the end of the year? If the terms are typically 12 months of full calendar year, do they come back up in December for reappointment? Can you explain how that works with us making the decision almost five months into the year, please?
Thank you, Ms. Hubig. Great question. So according to the ordinance recently adopted, the Lodging Tax Committee members would serve throughout the 2022 year and could be reappointed. They're going to be very busy in 2022. The committee will need to update the Anacortes Tourism Strategic Plan this year. So going to be a busy year for them.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone that applied to be on this committee. I know sometimes we have some trouble finding interested parties. And I, I really appreciate all the people that step forward and are willing to bring their talents to, to this position. I feel like we have a lot of good candidates, and it makes it very difficult. I will say that something that I've said before, that we have a great relationship as a city with our Anacortes Chamber of Commerce, as is shown by the work that they do for our community, and with what we do by funding them every year, over 50% of the LTAC budget. And for that reason, I believe that having a chamber employee on the LTAC Committee is inappropriate due to conflict of interest. I understand that, that chamber employees are on LTAC boards in different cities. I also believe that those different cities do not give the chambers in their cities over 50% of the, of the distributed funds. And I have heard nothing but good things about Kristi Lyman and the job that she does for the Chamber of Commerce and for our city in general. So it has, it's, it's absolutely not personal. But I would, I would move to consider, to consider some other applicants that have been brought forward. And I also want to say that I appreciate that all of the applicants were represented in our packet because this is a council-appointed committee, and we need to know who all these people are and their qualifications. So thank you for that.
Ms. Cleland.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, Ms. Moulton. And I, and I would like to reiterate something that I think I said when we discussed really specifying the type of, or we defined who could serve on the LTAC Committee. This is a tax that is collected by our hoteliers. It is our responsibility to collect those funds and to leverage them as effectively as possible to increase our tourism, to do beds and heads. And so I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we have an LTAC Committee that has as much expertise and wide range of experience as possible. This is, because this is unique, this is a unique committee compared to other, you know, other committees that exist within our city. And I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we really utilize that, that public money really well. So I want to say thank you for everyone who applied. I also want to thank the fact, thank Mr. Meesmer for including all the applications, you know, and the fact that Mr. Meesmer and Mayor Miller and Councilmember Young participated in kind of figuring out the slate. But I do think that it requires us to have, as a council, more discussion because after seeing some of the applications and folks that were included. I, I think that there are some folks that I really feel should be on the LTAC Committee. I think there are some folks who potentially have the capability to be on the LTAC Committee after a few years. But what I really want to see when it comes to this committee are folks who have a really clear understanding of what it takes to bring people in to our community, to spend dollars here, to stay here. And I, and I think there is expertise that were, of folks that were not necessarily included in the slate. So I want to, before I continue on, I want to open that up to everyone else to see what they feel about it.
Thank you. I've heard a couple of times of the conflict of interest from the chamber. I'm just curious on, do you have any examples on why that would be an issue? Because from my point of view, that would be a good person to be on there because they already know where there's fundings or they do the tourism. And that tax is supposed to go to tourism promotion and facility, and that's what they do. So I'm just curious on why or how that would be a bad thing.
Yes, if I could respond.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. It's the volume and the percentage that they receive that I believe constitutes a conflict of interest. When an organization receives every single year the lion's share of the funding, I feel that, that, that an employee of that organization should not be a sitting member of the organization. A lot of the applicants represent chamber businesses. The chamber, I believe, is involved in so many great conversations and events, and has really demonstrated their commitment and their expertise, especially in recent years, of including also not just chamber members in their outreach. And I have really appreciated that as well. So I just very strongly feel that, that a chamber employee does not belong on the, on the LTAC Committee, but has a great seat at the table at so many other, other places, and with chamber members also being, you know, likely on the committee. I think that we have that really well covered.
Mr. Carter.
So I understand the not being comfortable with it, but is it like a potential of fraud or just, I don't really understand the reason.
Okay, Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. No, that, I would not expect any kind of wrongdoing by anyone involved. It's not any kind of bad intent or any, any kind of intended deceit or anything like that. But I feel that it is a conflict for just straight up, for the, the organization that receives the lion's share to have an employee on the LTAC Committee. There are lots of other ways for, for the chamber to participate, and they do. That's all I can really say about that.
Okay. I think to maybe help move the debate along, I will mention that there was some compromise as we put together the slate in order to bring to council. And, and that's, you know, there's always, first of all, I need to back up and say, I very much appreciate the fact that folks want to participate on LTAC. We cannot run the city without various boards and commissions. LTAC, like was mentioned before, is a little bit unique because it specifically spells out the RCW that these are not a mayor's recommendation. This is a council. But I did, working as a, as the former Chair of LTAC, when it, I guess wasn't nearly as exciting for six years. Now it's very exciting, and I appreciate the, the excitement generated by LTAC. But maybe if we, we figure out, I don't know my Roberts' Rules of Order for, for polling, but I think it's, I think the council is okay with the, with the names of the generating businesses and, or even perhaps with some compromise, and it's not required for unanimous vote, that perhaps we could move, move the debate a little bit forward.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Maybe to back up a little bit, we're missing a G in lodging tax in the now therefore the resolved statement. So I'm hoping that we can keep track of that as we go through the rest of the debate. But also the headings appointing the six members. They say, representing lodging tax revenue generating businesses, and if you added a lot of hyphens, that would be close to accurate, but it's not quite the language from the statute. And the second heading, representing organizations potentially funded by lodging tax revenue, is not at all the language from the statute. The language from the statute, remember, is persons involved in activities authorized to be funded by revenue received from the lodging tax, involved today, assumedly, in activities that are authorized to be funded. So I would like us to just agree to use the language from the statute in those headings and also not neglect the G. I agree with others who have spoken. I think that the Chamber of Commerce thing is an unavoidable conflict. I would also say that we're, we're not actually looking necessarily for expertise. We're not appointing a committee of technicians. We're appointing people for their judgment. And because of changes that we made, or, or because we declined to make changes in the structure of the committee, we are losing some representation, namely, we're losing representation from businesses that benefit from tourism. Because we did have people on the committee last year who didn't really qualify, but they, they represented businesses that benefit from tourism, you know, kayak businesses, boat businesses, that, that that expertise, or rather maybe that experience, I think is also important. That perspective is important. Mr. Meesmer suggested that, that the LTAC group would rewrite the Lodging Tax Strategic Plan. But when we did that eight years ago or so, maybe it was six years ago, we expanded the group that worked on that. We had a Tourism Promotion Advisory Committee appointed by the council to consist of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and some others, two additional council members. I think maybe the chamber had a representative on that committee. And that's what I would like to see in terms of who we have generate the ideas that go into the Tourism Promotion Strategic Plan because we need to reach beyond the people who are strictly authorized by the statute to be on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and grab those businesses that benefit from tourism. We need to know what their perspectives are, what their, what their ideas are. So I appreciate that we'll, we should be working on that this year because it was a five or six-year plan and it ended. But I think we should expand the scope. And maybe we should keep that in mind. I, I appreciate the chamber's expertise. I just wouldn't put them on the committee because I, I think it's an unavoidable conflict. Their judgment will be, you know, let's give the chamber more money. And they got a lot of it. I would really like to see someone representing the Arts Festival because that has got to be the event, the biggest, biggest event. I think the application we have here says that it's the biggest event in Skagit County, and it receives the smallest amount of lodging tax. I mean, the, the ratio there is, is really substantial. So I think that that would be a good addition to the roster.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Walters, for catching the misspell. And also, we can absolutely change that to the exact language of the RCW on each of those two for the representation and the potentially funded. To go back to re, or revising and updating the Tourism Strategic Plan, so the chamber does now have their Tourism Committee back up and running. And so that would be a good committee to involve in this as well. But my thought was in, you know, of course, working with the Chair and with the committee members would be to come up with a, a work plan on moving forward with updating that plan, which would involve local businesses, the chamber, and the community as a whole, and perhaps even having workshops in the council chambers. And hopefully, hopefully, not necessarily filling it like we used to in the old days, but at least getting quite a few people in here. So, thank you.
And again, just trying to provide some context of working off the previous strategic plan. When you talk about things like the Arts Festival, the, the strategic plan specifically talked about, once, once events are up and running, you don't necessarily continue to put more money into them. And that was, that was one of the things that's discussed over the years. But anyway, that's very good points.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I would be, I'm open to adding an Arts Festival member to the LTAC Board. I think we have a really good application from Jennifer Wilson, who is a Communication Manager at the Arts Festival. So I would be in favor of, of adding her name instead of a chamber employee to the, to the three.
Mr. Walters.
And I agree with Ms. Moulton. I just was referring to that, that person. I also think we have an opportunity here to maybe support our relationship with the port because we have a representative of the port who does receive some money, although not a lot of money. But they do quite a bit with that. The Rock the Dock Concert Series, they're partners in some of the, the other projects. And I, I think that they would add value to this group as well.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. As Chair of the committee, one of the things that we def, we looked at was all of the resumes. And quite honestly, you know, all of the council members, my fellow councilmembers, you make excellent points. You really do. members, you make excellent points, you really do. However, part of this thing is that the Committee in itself, you know, being a member of the Committee does not prevent excellent ideas from coming forward. The whole purpose of the Committee is to vet those ideas, and to see what things can benefit the city as a whole. So, to the point that we have people whom would bring some expert ideas to the table, serving on the Committee doesn't do that. I mean, ideas come forward either way. The whole purpose of the Committee is just to vet those, and to have prisms that can look at the dynamics of what's taking place and vet new ideas. One of the things that we are also trying to prevent in looking forward, that vision forward, is to ensure that not only the look of what we want the city to become, the ideas of beds and heads, cash registers ringing up, all those are ideas that take sometimes a myriad of people. The Arts Council is beloved, and I love the Arts Council, and yes, they would be a wonderful member, but even at that, their application for use of the funds is not inhibited in any way by them not serving on the Committee. The Chamber is the same thing. The challenge, I do think, with the Chamber is that question of conflict of interest, but the real question is, does that applicant represent herself as a member of the community, and not just an employee of the Chamber? If that distinction can be made, I honestly think that she brings something to the table. But the thing that I am saying to you about the names that we chose to bring forward, they're all stellar candidates, they all contribute to this community in big ways, they all work within the community at all levels, and they serve and they have ideas. This is adding just a few new people to a Committee that will be broad-brushed in almost a global look at the opportunities that's coming to the table. I say to anyone that may feel that, you know, the Committee may swing one way or the other, that's not the function of the Committee. It is simply to look at the ideas that are coming, and to vet them. And so, the idea of having some new eyes at the table, in addition to those existing eyes, is to ensure that new thoughts and new ideas that may not have been considered before are looked at when we are deciding with the limited resources, what can we do? I think that if we can, as a Council, vote on, in segments, meaning vote on the hotelers, because we only have three hotelers anyway, and then vote on the names of those that have been put forward, and then if there are additional names that need to come forward as a result of those, then we'll do that. But I think that if we can agree that there are only three hoteliers that we have coming forward, we, the RCW requires us, if we, you know, to vote in the hoteliers, we can do that. But then we put forward three names, why not take them individually? That's the question to Council.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Well, certainly, I would entertain any motion, but I would entertain a motion for the entire 3080, with, of course, the correction, the spelling correction, and the wording to match the RCW. I would entertain that motion, or any other form of motion that Council might want to take on.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Given it's, I'm Chair of the Committee, I'm not sure if it's appropriate that I make the motion, but if it is appropriate, I make the motion that we approve the slate as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Young to approve Resolution 3080, with, I believe, with the spelling correction as pointed out by Mr. Walters, and the language corrected to reflect the RCW. Is that, does that correct, Mr. Young? And seconded by-
That's correct.
Seconded by Mr. Carter. Discussion.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I think that's useful, lays the groundwork for the rest of the debate. So, the, what I heard is it incorporated those three corrections. I would move to amend the resolution to strike Kristi Lyman, Anacortes Chamber of Commerce, and replace her with, I think Nancy Raitan from the Port.
Second.
Okay, this is the LTAC test of my memory of all the motions that Ms. Hunt's going to help me with. So, I've got a motion by Mr. Walters, and a second by Ms. Moulton, to amend the motion to replace Kristi Lyman with Nancy Raitan of the Port of Anacortes. Ms. Hunt, would you call for a vote on that amendment to the motion? And make sure I do them in the right order, I think that's the first one to do.
Ms. Moulton. Yes. Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
No.
Mr. Young.
No.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries to amend.
Okay, and I've got a motion by Mr. Young, and a second by Mr. Carter, to approve the Resolution 3080 as amended. Discussion, Ms. Cleland.
Yeah, I, full disclosure, I've served on the Arts Festival Board for many years. I have since gotten off the Board about a month ago. I've worked with Jennifer Wilson, both volunteering at the Arts Festival and other capacities. I think her level of expertise, her understanding of events, how folks come into our community, how volunteers work with our community, how the arts work with our community, the impact, the economic impact it has on our restaurants, on our hotels, on our schools, with their granting, with the granting program that is part of the Arts Festival and their mission. I really think that she, as a late applicant, but as a very capable and qualified applicant, should be on this Committee, and would serve well. So, my inclination is to replace Anastasia Brenzik with Jennifer Wilson, and I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to amend the already amended motion to replace Jennifer Wilson the Arts Festival, or to replace Anastasia Brennick of Anacortes Pride with Jennifer Wilson of the Arts Festival, motion by Ms. Cleland, a second by Mr. Walters.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So, I completely agree with Mr. Young, with what all of he said about getting new eyes on this kind of thing. I think that's really important, but also, we tried to broaden the representation on this Committee, and that discussion was had a couple weeks ago with amendment of the ordinance. So, we have dispensed with that, and I think that's too bad, because we lost people like Andy Stewart and Eric Shore, who filled those, that additional bucket of people, the other category, and I think Anastasia Brennick would fit into that category, but I actually don't think that she really fits in to this category. And I'm inclined to narrowly construe how this category reads. I don't think that the heading that was in the original draft of the resolution is an accurate characterization of what the statute says. So, I think that that leads to an inescapable conclusion that we need to strike her, and I agree that Jennifer Wilson would be a good addition.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I think we've had this discussion as Council, and we had a vigorous discussion already. The categories are very simple, and they make evident as to who can or cannot apply. Ms. Brenzik fits all that category, she really does, and she has served this community admirably. Not only did she serve in the Pride, but she's also the founder of a children's organization that's a nonprofit, which is the category. And so, at this point, you know, I'm sort of a little taken aback by the idea that, to suggest that Ms. Brenzik would be less qualified than anybody else to serve on this Committee. She has done a stellar job, not only of reaching out to the community, but serving in her capacity with the school systems and all. So, you know, again, when we brought forward those names, those names were vetted. This 11th-hour change in how we decide we want to go about it, I think takes it back just a little bit. Ms. Brenzik is superb. Not that those other candidates are not, they are, they really are. But when we look at the Committee and talk about new eyes, we're talking about also adding people to this that can look at it from a different prism.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So, I still have a motion and a second on the table. I think we're probably ready to call for the vote to the amended motion by Ms. Cleland, I think, made the motion, seconded by Mr. Walters. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote, please?
Voting on the proposed amendment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the amendment to change Anastasia Brennick with Jennifer Wilson. That is the motion and the second.
Mr. McDougal.
No.
Ms. Hubick.
No.
Mr. Carter.
No.
Mr. Young.
No.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton. No. Motion fails.
Okay, so we still have the Resolution 3080 as presented, with that one amendment. And Ms. Hunt, could you-
Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Walters.
Yeah, but before we move to a vote on the final, unless there are other amendments, I do, I do think it's important that we follow the statute, and I don't think that Anastasia Brenzik fits into that bucket. I don't think it's about qualifications, you know, qualifications is kind of loosely used here, it's really about what bucket people fit into per the statute. I guess, if, in this limited instance, if Council says they qualify, then maybe they qualify, but I don't think that a strict reading of the statute supports that. So, you know, we voted down that last amendment, maybe we don't like the alternative person, but I do hope that we are able to achieve compliance with the statute through our appointments tonight.
Mayor Miller.
Mayor Miller.
All right, let's go, Ms. Moulton, and then Mr. Young.
Okay, just to be certain, Mr. Walters, could you please clarify that, how Ms. Brenzik doesn't seem to fit the statute? I'm unclear on that.
Mayor Miller.
Oh, Mr. Walters.
Well, maybe it's a gap in my knowledge, I mean, our application is kind of generic for all boards and Committees, so it doesn't actually seem to ask the question, how do you qualify for this position? But, the bucket that we're appointing in the second section is persons involved in activities authorized to be funded by revenue received under this chapter. So, what would we fund that they are currently involved in?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young, sorry, yes, you were next.
To answer Mr. Walters' question, again, the nonprofit school that Ms. Brenzik founded, and also is part of, are eligible for funds, to apply for funds at least. And at the end of the day, if we're going to apply this level of scrutiny to everyone, then we need to do it for everyone that has applied. We've had this conversation about who can or cannot serve on this Committee from the very beginning, what the definition of the Committee's role is, who can do it, even in the language, as you brought up, Mr. Walters, with all due respect, the conflict between what we have listed as defining this Committee, and what you're saying the statute says. Now, those are questions that can be answered later on, and maybe there could be a challenge later on, but as of tonight, we have levered this long enough. The Committee needs to move forward. If there is any question of ability, any redefining of what this Committee needs to be, say, do, I say we do that as a whole. But what we've just had was a vote of four to say that Ms. Brenzik should move forward, and we have a second on the floor to bring forward the vote to confirm this Committee so they can get to work.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, and sorry to interrupt. I'd just like to bring to the Council's attention Ms. Brenzik's application for lodging tax, and I quote, "And am the Vice Chair of the nonprofit Anacortes Pride, which is bringing our first gay pride parade to Anacortes this summer." And so, that qualifies Ms. Brenzik as a person eligible to receive funding, just as the Fourth of July Parade would be eligible to receive money, or the Corvette Club that brings their cars into town. So, just wanted to add that, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Okay, I'll buy that. I was not inclined to think that that particular parade would be one that is eligible for tourism money, but given that other parades are, maybe that does make sense. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to approve the Resolution 3080 as amended, with one change in the name. And, Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote, please?
Ms. Hubick.
Can I say something first?
Yes.
So, I just want to say that this is not how I think we want to handle our wonderful community members who are willing to put their name into a talent pool, and put forward their kind of personal application and qualifications. I don't think this is how we want it to go down. So, I just want to say thank you to all of the folks who are named here today, and also, you know, Mr. Brian Holmes, who was also, also applied at a point when we had not clearly defined the LTAC language. I think he put in his application ahead of time. He has a great small business in town. He is not, he's not quite serving on a nonprofit that quite qualifies for LTAC, but he is kind of like our kayak tour representation we had previous years who no longer qualifies. I just, it makes me really uncomfortable when something comes forward to Council that seems like there's maybe a little bit more backstory than, than we're getting at our presentation. And that's not to say it's anyone's fault or anything happened, but I want the public to continue to participate. I want to acknowledge the fact that the slate of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Meesmer, the slate of all the folks who are, who qualify, who fall under the folks representing organizations that qualify to receive funds, they are all new people. None of them, whether they are getting appointed, or they weren't appointed, ever served on this Committee. So, we have gotten quite a bit of new perspective, new folks in there. But, but this, this makes me uncomfortable just the way kind of it had to go down. I think when we try to appoint folks to Committees, we don't, our desire, or at least my personal desire, is to not kind of critically- desire, is to not kind of critically dissect what their qualifications are. So I just, I just want to say that, and I think that's my feeling on council. So I want to say thank you again for everyone who is willing to put their name forward and put themselves out there, and I hope that they will continue to do so for other opportunities in the future.
Thank you. Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I generally agree with what Ms. Cleland McGrath just spoke about. On the other hand, when we were debating the structure of the committee, we did have a former hotelier here telling us about how we had to strictly apply the law and had to, and this was a person who had talked to the state auditor's office, and, you know, I am inclined to agree, we should strictly apply the law. So I do think that in this case, where we do have a statute that, you know, makes this case, or requires us to make the case, we need to evaluate qualifications just to make sure that they fit into those right buckets. So I think that that makes sense to me. You know, we need to strictly comply with the law as a general matter, but especially when we have extra scrutiny, we fail ourselves if we don't take that cue to actually look carefully.
Mayor Miller?
Well, I was actually going to offer other members of the council that maybe haven't engaged in this debate, because I learned from the retreat that I'm supposed to do that. Other members of the council that hasn't, haven't been engaged directly in this wonderful conversation wish to weigh in. Ms. Hubig?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I also want to agree with what Cleland McGrath said. We have incredible candidates that have applied, we have very qualified candidates that have applied, we have candidates who have done this for years and years and years, we have candidates who come into it with eyes that none of us can possibly know unless we've experienced what they have. And I believe that there are certain voices that need to be amplified, and this is an opportunity for us to work on amplifying a section of tourism that, when I was at the chamber, struggled to find a way for us to fit into. There are things that are easy when it comes to spending money, there are things that are hard when it comes to spending money right, and I think that having underrepresented communities have their voices heard is just as important as having highly, highly, highly qualified people there. And I think that, I think that we should give it a chance. It is an annual appointment, and I think we should give everybody a chance that is currently on the slate.
Mr. McDougal, anything else to add to this debate? Mr. Carter? Okay, I feel like we have enough debate, and we've got a motion and a second on the table. And Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote, please?
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for the spirited debate, and I look forward to the LTAC appointments next year. All right, with no further business, Mr. Young?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. I truly, you know, of course, I'm going to lean on the wisdom of you, Mayor Miller, given your experience, but my hope is to reach out to all of those people who have something to contribute to the LTAC committee, whether it's thoughts, ideas, expertise, and just try to figure out how can we make this work and work for our city. I promise you that.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.